Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting of May sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll all rise for the pledge, please. Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
I will. Council member vote.
Here.
Council member Sherman.
Here.
Council member Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Council member McDowell.
Present.
And council member Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does council have any late changes to the agenda? Well, I'd like just to make a couple comments. I'd like to thank the Shelton Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, Squawson Island Tribe, MaceCom, and all first responders, the Fire Department even that showed up for our squatting incident at Shelton High School that was believed to be a true event. And those first responders went in within minutes and got, you know, swept classrooms and properties and kept everything under control. Even our fire chief was calming parents down on the road. And I really appreciate the hard work that that went into that. And Joe has a few comments about MaceCom as well.
Yeah, I just also want to highlight the good job by our nine-one-one dispatchers and call takers did a fantastic job and just kind of put things into perspective at any given moment. We have three nine-one-one call takers and dispatchers on taking care of fire law EMS for Mason County. And they dispatch for tribal, city, county, law enforcement agencies, as well as all of our fire districts and EMS providers. The dispatcher that took the call initially, she's very, very new, still kind of in training, did a fantastic job. And the team around her is doing a great job of bringing her up to speed. So I just want to say thanks to Barb, Hillary, Amory, and Katie, and just a fantastic job by the team. And it's a real incident until it's not. And I appreciate the way everybody handled it. I know that there's some work to be done between all the organizations or always will be lessons learned. But I look forward to supporting the change and making sure that we have strong response plans for an event like this because it's not a matter of if it's when and being prepared is the best thing that we can do. So. Thanks. Does the council members have anything to say?
I, I didn't know too much about it until after it happened, but I just like very proud of first responders in Shelton and Mason County and the leaders we have in place for those. So thank you very much.
Thank you. If you'd like to share anything.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to take this opportunity because the sheriff wasn't able to make it tonight. But I wanted to recognize Sergeant Brian Spira, who was one of the first people that arrived on scene. In our training, when we do active shooter, one of the things that we talk about is that those first people that get there, they are in charge until somebody else gets there that outranks them to take over. But that doesn't necessarily mean if somebody higher ranking gets there that you're going to take over if the person that initiated the response is doing a great job. So I'm here to tell you that several people that outrank Sergeant Spira showed up after him. But he did such a great job organizing that tactical response into the school. We had people in the school within three minutes of that call coming out. And we were able to clear that entire school inside and outside in an hour and twenty-six minutes, which is pretty remarkable depending on the size and the amount of people that we had. At one point, there were more than twenty cops that were there, and I had no idea we would have that many that were that available. But it was a great opportunity for us to see what it would really look like if it was real. So I just wanted to make sure that we recognized him because he threw all of that together very quickly and did a great, great job.
Sergeant Spears from the Sheriff's Office.
Yes, he's amazing.
And thank you again as, as the mayor and as a parent with a junior in high school. I really appreciate you guys going in and all the first responders and taking care of that situation and getting it under control. Thank you. All right. Council, have any board reports to share?
Shelton Metropolitan Parks. Okay, we had a Shelton Metropolitan Parks District Sparked Ride Board Meeting last Monday, and North Cliff Park is coming along, and we have acquired some funding for some equipment up there, and we're going to have an event in June, I believe, having the city and the residents in the area come together and do a work party and together the new playground. So that's the report.
All right. Anything else? All right, move on to our consent agenda. Has everyone reviewed the items to get an agenda? We have a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as published.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Next, we have an agenda as a presentation with Finance Director Mike Givens.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, I'm talking about the March financial report. Just to spend a little bit of time on the general fund because that's the area that we've been looking at most carefully lately. So I'm gonna just run through at first here, the revenues. I monitor the revenue and expenses regularly, I would say pretty much daily to just see what's happening, particularly in the general fund. Since we have the benefit really of two months past March at this point that I can look at and give you a little bit more detail on, I wanted to share with you that beyond what the financial report officially covers, I'm pleased to report that property taxes are at target for the first half payments. That's looking good because those of us that went through public finance during the Great Recession, you could see signs that things were changing at that first half payment, and things are looking solid. And there's certainly no sign that there's anything changing there, as well as sales and use taxes holding steady. It's showing no decrease. I would say the increase over two thousand and twenty-two is probably just due to inflation and the higher cost of goods and services. So it's slightly above where we were at at March of two thousand and twenty-two. And again, I can look out a little bit more because we also have April receipts in there at this point. So overall revenues are trending where I'd like to see them for one quarter of the fiscal year, which is what the end of March represents. I see no indication that our revenue picture will worsen. We're still forecasting to be down about one point eight percent below budget. We'll update that certainly if we see any changes, but as long as the economic conditions stay as they are today and have been for the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-three, I don't see any change in that picture, which is good news. I certainly wouldn't want it to get any less. As I mentioned at last month's report, the general fund expenses exceed revenue. I'm just gonna skip ahead here a little bit to not even get you, Mark. Anyway, maybe I'm gonna go to page four if we could. Might get an assist here. As I mentioned, that where the expenses exceed revenue, the real concern exists is that many of those expenses are ongoing in nature, which is where we're really giving some careful consideration to during the current fiscal year. We're trying to make deliberate decisions to decrease this year to bring those ongoing expenses more in line with revenue so that we're sustainable. And that's a goal with that. Certainly, if there's some one-time projects we have, we would look at those as we have in our policy as things to do with that one-time money. Page four, which we're at of the financial report shows this really clearly where in our budget, our expenses are exceeding revenue. We're estimating revenue for two thousand and twenty-three to come in at just over fourteen point one million, and we're estimating expenses to be at just over sixteen million. This really hasn't changed since last month's report. It leaves a difference of just what over one point nine million. In other words, expenses exceed revenue. And so as I stated, my biggest concern is that much of that is overages in ongoing expenses. Ongoing commitment to expenses like personnel, software, even professional services that the city is dependent on need to be budgeted to be within our anticipated revenue. And that's what we are really trying to be mindful of at the leadership team right now. And really monitor our expenses going forward. On page four, you'll also notice that at the lower half, we have expenses by department. And I just wanted to have you take a look at almost towards the bottom is the police department. So sometimes there's a, I think, a little bit of a misconception that if we have open positions, we're automatically saving money. But in particular with the police department, where they have three open positions and have had some open positions for much of the year, your notice we're estimating actual twenty twenty-three expenditures at just over three point nine million, which is over adopted budget by about seventeen thousand dollars. And you, and you might assume we'd have some significant savings there because of the open positions. But we have to fill those positions with overtime to make sure we're meeting minimums. We have events happen, shootings, events like last Thursday that end up costing more. So just because we have open positions doesn't mean we're automatically having savings. And Chief Beeson and Captain Costad monitor overtime judiciously and make sure that it's monitored, but they have to have minimums. We have events that are out of their control. So we don't necessarily realize that savings there that you might think we do. And that was one area I wanted to just point out because as, as in particular you as council members, you know where we have some openings and where you might wonder, well, why are you estimating that to be what it is? And that's what we're taking into account is really looking at where our costs are going to be realistically so that we're not assuming we'll have savings where we might not to really give us a clear picture. At the bottom line, we're estimating using what we know of as of the March closing of our financial month and the ending balance of the general fund will be just over three point one four four million, which is just under the twenty percent target set by you as council. And again, that's using ending fund balance from two thousand and twenty-two for ongoing expenses. So we'll be bringing you a supplemental budget next month that makes some recommendations for changes to begin to bring some of those ongoing expenses into line more, and we'll detail that more in depth with you as that happens. The rest of the financial report.
Mike?
Joe had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Finish. I got just a, okay, sorry, go ahead.
So the rest of the financial report goes through the other funds. I did, I'm focusing a lot on the general fund. I did want to just mention to you that there's nothing unexpected happening with them where we are estimating an unfavorable balance on or variance on some of those funds. It's primarily due to the need to make corrections to the budget and will bring, we will likely bring a second supplemental to you once we have more firm costs. And in particular, where we will need to probably make some adjustments where you're seeing that negative variance would be the solid waste fund due to the C Street project, the Capital Projects Fund for the Civic Center Parking Lot, and the sewer fund to add more for the land purchase, and likely the Western Gateway Project. And that's just to really balance out both the revenues where we're going to get more grant money. And then the expenses as those come in true to getting those professional service lines and contractor costs in. And I don't want to bring it to you multiple times. Take it one way just to bring it back then once the project's finished. Nothing's out of line, I would say, from what you expected. It's just we need to make, well, maybe C Street would be an exception to that, but we just need to make some corrections to make that true to what's actually happening. But we'll likely do that separate from this first supplemental once we have those costs in line. So that concludes the report, and I'm happy to answer questions now.
I appreciate the reporting, something that's, I think, maybe an interesting data point for us to look at and would be, I'm curious if it's something we can start incorporating into these reports is the FTE hours or the FTE equivalents, how many, how many employees are we burning a month essentially each, each reporting period, however you would look at that. But I know we have ninety to a hundred or so FTEs in, in a monthly period. How many, how many of the ninety or a hundred are? You know, what does that FTE rate look like? So we can kind of take a look.
As in filled positions at that time?
Yeah.
Filled versus budgeted.
Well, I mean, a hundred FTE worked full-time. Nobody took any days off. The report would show a hundred or something like that, right? And then
Okay.
So, you know, are we seventy-five, eighty? Kind of interested to see how many.
Okay, we'll take a
You understand maybe what I'm asking?
Yep, I think I do.
You know, and a large, large portion of this ending fund balances because the council, we wanted to hold people accountable. So we signed a deal with the squalling. We're allocated a million dollars out of, out of the general fund reserves for that.
Correct.
And we may not use all of that, but that is what we we said we would spend.
And we're, and we're really trying to give an estimate here on what's happening in the first quarter to be realistic and not assume we're going to overuse that, but we don't know just as you stated, what's going to happen. But we're trying to really give a pretty as close as we can estimate to what we're seeing as the trend. But honestly, that could change and we could be way off. We could, but we're trying to do our best in that estimate.
Yes, Kathy.
I have a little concern about the fines and penalty one and the B and O.
Yes.
Why is that a large, as large negative as it is?
So B and O, we estimated that one of our larger areas into the business and occupation pact would be doing more than they actually are. And so we're estimating that to be truly what we're seeing each month. And so we overbudgeted. So we're bringing that more in line to be in more of a realistic match to what that large contributor to the B and O tax revenue item is actually paying.
Okay. And then the fines and penalties?
They are just down. We're not, I think our municipal court administrator spoke to this a little bit in our financial sustainability task force, but there are just not as many traffic, I don't want to just put it on traffic violation, but violations of any kind where people are cited, they're just not bringing in as much as we budgeted. So I saw that, to be honest, trend, but one, I think in municipal government put that a little bit on the pandemic driving things down and unsure of when it would recover, but we probably realistically need to match that more closely to what we've seen in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. So we're not having to show such a big variance. And I'm kind of, that's not a huge budget area, but it's certainly one where you don't want to be way off. So if we were to underbudget it and come in over, I find that to be a lot better on the revenue side of things. So we'll bring you something that's a little bit more in line next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And can you refresh my memory what non-departmental means?
Sure, those are the costs for largely those of us in finance, human resources, information technology, the city manager's office to adequately charge out across departments. Even like fairly.
Thank you.
And we're spending a lot more on engineers right now because we don't have one. We're outsourcing. On an hourly basis, I think that's an accurate statement, whether, whether we're putting, you know, two thousand and forty hours of engineering services out there as we would full-time FTE, not necessarily. But yes, if you're looking at it strictly an hour of an in-house engineer compared to an hour of, of a contracted engineer, yes, we're paying more. Any other questions? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Now, Executive Director Cheryl Haywood has to update for us about Timberland Regional Library.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes. Looking around.
Awesome. Awesome. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Onisco and Deputy Mayor Schmidt and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to provide to you the two thousand and twenty-two State of Timberland Regional Library and several two thousand and twenty-three initiatives. As you know, Timberland Regional Library serves five hundred and fifty thousand people in Mason, Pacific, Lewis, Grace Harbor, and Thurston Counties. With me this evening is Dr. Ken Sebby, trustee for Mason County and our current Board of Trustees President, and Aaron Stumpf, Shelton Library Manager. You should have received Timberland Regional Library's two thousand and twenty-two annual report, also available at trl.org. I want to take this opportunity to thank the two hundred and forty-five staff across the twenty-nine libraries in the five counties for their continued resilience, collaboration, and can-do-tness both last year and into this year. So here are some of the highlights from two thousand and twenty-two. First off, I want to mention that Shelton Timberland Library had a massive refresh, great partnership with the City of Shelton. Our Board of Trustees in the fall of two thousand and twenty agreed to help out cities if we had the funding to help out cities that needed help to keep up with maintenance and so on. And so we worked with the city and partnered with the city to the tune of five hundred thousand dollars. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was for the new furniture, bookshelves, carpet, paint, and all that. And then two hundred and fifty thousand was the time of our staff to do all those major upgrades at the library. So I encourage you to check it out. It's a beautiful, beautiful new library. We also partnered with the city and updated the bathrooms with a gift that we had received that was specifically earmarked for the Shelton Timberland Library. So we did that the year before. Also, last year in two thousand and twenty-two, we had a twelve percent increase in new library open hours at the twenty-nine libraries. And for Shelton, that means nine to six Monday through Saturday. And just recently, they opened up on Sundays from ten to four. Last summer, there was a return to in-person summer library program, which goes June first to August thirty-first. And of course, that's coming up right again. Last year, nine thousand six hundred and three people attended over six hundred and fifty-two programs. And people got to walk along fifteen-story trails that we started during the pandemic. So more to come on the summer library program, again, June first to August thirty-first. We also had back to in-person story times last fall, baby times, toddler story times, preschool and family story times, all these programs that I'm mentioning to you fairly quickly. You can find out more by going to trl.org and looking at our programming schedule, which is really robust. Last year, we introduced a, an early literacy activity for ages birth to six and their parents and caregivers. It's called Grow a Reader for both in English and in Spanish. And you can go to any one of our libraries to pick up the, the keepsake where you can track your child's favorite books as the child gets, grows older. Late last year, we introduced iPads for in-library use at all libraries for people to check out using the library to access our online resources. Last year, we expanded the library of things to include new stargazing kits, new kitchen tools, new plankton kits that come with microscopes, thanks to the Pacific Shellfish Institute, and early math backpacks ages three through eight with a grant from the Capitol STEM Alliance. And so these particular math backpacks, there are ten of them at the Shelton Library for checking out. We also added additional fishing kits because of their popularity. And we have checkout or discover Washington kits with discover passes, thanks to the Washington State Park Foundation. We also added expanded access hours. So this is for people now ages fourteen years of age and older where you can access the library beyond the time the library staff are there. So that would be seven AM to eight PM daily, including Sundays and holidays. So you get one key card that you can access the following libraries at the times I just mentioned. Hootsport, Packwood, Nacelle, Ocean Park, McLeary, Elma, and in about a month from now, El Waco. Okay, so last fall, we issued five thousand four hundred and twenty-three new library cards during September's library card signup month. And during that month, we provided six new library card designs. Well, starting June first of this year, going to July fifteenth, there will be a library card design contest for birth to five, six to eleven, and twelve to eighteen. There will be a winner in each category, and then we're gonna take the three winners and create new library card designs for September's library card signup month. In terms of usage, physical checkouts for the Shelton Library users went up by two percent in two thousand and twenty-two to a hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and five physical items checked out. Overdrive, which is the downloadable eBooks, e-audio books, and access to over four thousand e-magazines, went up by eight percent to eighty-nine thousand six hundred and fourteen overdrive checkouts. There are thirty-four percent of the population that is at nine thousand nine hundred and nineteen people are using the, have active library cards with us. So here are some highlights for this year. We are partnering with Childcare Action Council for Mason and Thurston County, and we are really part, you know, partnering and advocating, supporting the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which is focuses on children birth to five, you can, where they receive a free book monthly until they turn the age of five. So you can go to Childcare Action Council's website or trl.org or Dolly Parton Imagination Library and sign up your child there. Wanted to mention that we are deeply involved in the Mason County Broadband Action Team. We have been working on Timberland's digital equity resources that is due to the Department of Commerce at the state level on June fourteenth. And lastly, we have an event that's going on that's free. All the, everyone's invited. It's on May twenty-fifth on Thursday from nine AM to noon. It's called Moving Forward Together: Mental Health in the Region. Learn about our community's mental and social emotional health and opportunities for STEM education and family wage careers. As always, I would like to end on a quote that is relevant to the times we are living in. Libraries will get you through times of no money better than money will get you through times of no libraries. Thank you again for this opportunity. Do you have any questions?
Right, any comments or questions? Thank you. Thank you.
I, I do. Thank you. I do have one. I, I gave a presentation last night to the Elma City Council, and there was a person on Zoom who's a consultant for their city. And after my presentation, he spoke quite a bit about Grant Select, which is one of our online resources for grants. And he was saying that he had identified over sixty-six grants from that database that could help the City of Elma. So I just wanted to mention that at this moment.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are no business items this evening. Public Works Director Jay Harris has information for us about a contract order.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. So the C Street landfill, I gave you folks an update a couple weeks ago, showed you some pictures of tremendous earth moving and excavation. So some real good news to report on site that the, the landfill waste was all removed from the Miles property about a week and a half ago. And we were able to put a cap of onsite material on it to stabilize it because it was really wet material. Mother Nature has cooperated very, very well these warm days, has really helped this earth-moving project. And the contractor, Brumfield Construction, is, has put down the liner over the top of the whole thing and is compacting two feet of basically clay material that is the impermeable layer. Be done with that in a couple weeks. And then the next steps are to put topsoil down, fencing, probably hold off on the hydroseeding until after the summer months. That way, the, the grass, because the grass germinates and then the heat kills it, right? So it's likely we're gonna hit off on that. But things are going good. But the, the offsite, the miles cost to remove the miles roadway to excavate the waste out of the miles area, bring it to the site, backfill that with onsite material, put the road back in again. We were able to actually reduce the cost on putting the road back in again. Also, that the road was way up in, in the air for one reason or another. And we kept it under control, kept it not as high. It doesn't look like a big dike anymore. And so that, that was very helpful that Miles allowed us to put it in that little more fitting. But the resolution you have before you tonight is for Aspect Consulting Contract Change Order Number Two for a hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars for the additional cleanup construction design and oversight. And there was no changes to the resolution since the last meeting.
Thank you. Donna, anyone have a comment?
No, we don't.
Anybody in the audience want to speak on this issue? All right, maybe if we're reading a resolution number one, two, seven, one, dash, zero, four, two, three.
Resolution number one, two, seven, one, dash, zero, four, two, three. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve Contract Change Order Number Two to the C Street Landville Environmental Cleanup Construction Planning Contract with Aspect Consulting LLC.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number one, two, seven, one, dash, zero, four, two, three as presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution one, two, seven, one, dash, zero, four, two, three as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. All right. Recreation Coordinator Jordan has the details for us about the Civic Center Rotating Art Gallery.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor and Mayor of Council. Tonight, I am bringing you recommended artwork by the Arts Commission for the Upcoming Rotating Art Gallery. Uh, the city did a call to artists uh, through different socials and media, through website work, um, and then artists' proposals,mittles were due by April twenty-eight. Uh, we had a total of four artists submit their artwork, and the Arts Commission juried on May third to review those artwork. And then the arts, upon approval, will be hung on May thirty-first and up through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And upon approval tonight, I, they will be hung and hopefully they are food.
All right. Donna, anyone sign up for a comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
If you'd like to speak on this. All right. Do we have a motion?
Shelton Arts Commissioner's recommendations for placement in the Civic Center Rotating Art Gallery.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Those are great. Great artwork. As I say every time.
Oh, the Arts Commission now.
Yeah.
So the Arts Commission now.
Yeah. That wall is perfect for the arts. It would be nice to have another wall somewhere that we could.
We can look into it.
Expand on.
Try to find a couple of walls in the building.
Yeah. But thank you. Those are great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. We have a motion to second to approve Shelton's Art Commission Recommendations for Placement of Civic Center Art Gallery. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right. Mark, you have the manager.
Got a few things for you tonight. Thank you, Mayor, yeah, council members. Uh, uh, just a few comments on the cleanup event last Saturday. Uh, we're hoping it would be more highly attended. It was maybe the heat, you know, didn't motivate people too much. So we got a couple of dump truckloads of, of uh, trash and debris uh, loaded out there from our residents in, in the community. Um, probably in a two-ton, two-and-a-half-ton range. So um, not, you know, um, not, uh, not what we, uh, I guess hoped, but it's still uh, some progress. Uh, the next week, uh, next Saturday, this coming Saturday, we'll uh, duplicate that event, uh, same place, northeast corner of First and Grove. Um, and uh, we hope to have more people out there taking advantage of the service and cleaning up the yard and making some progress there.
Would that be the answer? Twenty and twenty?
Yep, the Saturday. Uh, late breaking news, uh, the legislature um, approved a fix the Blake decision uh, addressing uh, possession and use of drugs in, in public. Uh, we haven't had a chance to really look into that uh, deeply, but uh, it sounds like at least that it's um, it, it meets that, will meet the city's needs and what we were looking at with the city attorney and some other communities and their fixes that were um, were previously approved by by them leading up to this uh, this special session. So uh, we're quite thankful that the session lasted one day, essentially, that uh, we have resolution moving forward.
Seventy-five pages.
Yes, yeah.
And Mark, thank you. And city staff are working with our attorney and keeping counsel in the loop as we work towards the possibility of that not happening. So we were prepared if that um, were not to come through. I'm glad to hear that there is a decision at this point, but appreciate the legwork on the backend to make sure we were prepared for that scenario.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's important to mention that we've been in contact with Mason County the whole time, too. Uh, it's really important to have some consistent um regulations laws if we can, uh, particularly regarding this, this type of activity um, in our community. So it's been uh, it's been great to have that relationship moving forward with Mason County as well. Um, the city was most recent, or very recently, um, notified that both wastewater treatment plants uh, were awarded outstanding performance awards for twenty twenty-two. Uh, there was a hundred and nine plants statewide that achieved uh, this goal, and it's um, you know, it's quite an achievement. I don't know how many years in a row, Jay.
How many years we?
Yeah.
The question is, it's been a long time. Yeah.
Yeah, so i- it's a testament to our staff and the work they've put into this, uh, the maintenance program. Uh, and it's very, very important for our environment, our industry, our shellfish industry, um, namely out in Oakland Bay. So um, I believe they, they usually deliver some awards at some point later in the year, and we'll certainly have a uh, recognition for uh, for the folks that make that, those awards possible and a recognition possible for the city. Uh, and then the last thing is just a reminder of the study session next week on Tuesday. Uh, our public works staff, we'll be talking about uh, downtown corridor and street trees and uh, some of the issues that we're facing there, and we've talked about for some time, uh, really leading back to, you know, the um, downtown visioning project in twenty fifteen. So uh, trying to meet the goals of the downtown visioning project, uh, keep uh, keep some of the infrastructure in place and utilize the resources that we have available to us. Um, but also addressing some of the deficiencies and, and problems that uh, we have down there by uh, by these trees that are aging out here um, in the near future. So that is all on my list tonight for you.
Thank you, Mark. Comments or questions for Mark? All right. At this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donna, anyone sign up for public comment tonight?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Athena Ayers.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Mayor and City Council Members. Um, I'm here this evening on behalf of Community Lifeline and just to share some updates, both good and bad with you very quickly. Uh, the good news, I suppose, first, um, is also part of uh, the legislation. Um, State Representative Dan Griffey supported Community Lifeline in achieving a capital improvements grant for a hundred and three thousand dollars. So we are excited about that, and we'll be moving forward with uh, capital improvements necessary for increasing capacity and reapplying for the C U P hearing before the end of June. Um, obviously, that will be public knowledge, and I would encourage anybody um uh, on both sides of the fence for that, um, to attend that C U P hearing um, when it is posted. Um, and in the meantime, we'll be working on the capital improvements such as lighting and security and um, building improvements that uh, increase the safety and well-being of not just our participants, but also the communities surrounding the area. So we'll keep you posted on those um, updates as well. Um, some of the very quick uh, challenges that I wanted to present to you and maybe put on your radar as far as community needs um, within the City of Shelton um, is probably something that's come up before as far as respite care. Um, there is a large narrative around people who are struggling with homelessness that they are actively um, using or severely, severely mentally ill, and, and sometimes in some cases that is true. Um, but there is a whole bunch of people who do not get hurt or, or recognized um, in their experience, and, and part of that is um, our elderly population who are dealing with uh, chronic health conditions, um, people who are um, declining cognitively um, due to age and other health conditions. Uh, right now, we have two elderly participants. One is seventy-one, the other is sixty-four. Uh, one is unable to control their bowel movements or um, make it to the bathroom in time. Um, they struggle with a variety of things. Um, and in addition, is uh, having their, their finances stolen from them by a family member. Um, that has been reported to APS, but unfortunately, they're backed up through November. And so these people just kind of fall through the cracks and oftentimes decline. Um, unable to return to a, to a healthy place from that. Our other participant is sixty-four years old. Um, that person is uh, suffering from a severe T B I and also the beginning stages of dementia. Um, they become aggressive and angry when they are in that state of confusion and sometimes um, lash out and can be challenging to deal with. Um, they do not have family here. Uh, their closest family is in uh, Ohio. And so um, although that case has also been reported to APS, again, they're backed up until November. So we really, really need a respite care or some kind of transitional place for folks. Thank you.
Tina, can you hold on one second?
I'll talk to you after. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Our next speaker is Dean Jewitt.
Morning. Uh, just want to have a couple of positive notes. Uh, I know the city worked really hard on the Gateway Project. Uh, I can appreciate, can appreciate that. It's a good foundation, a good setting. It looks good heading out Railroad Avenue. So appreciate that. Uh, Kathy, you're moxie and stick, sticking to, to us uh, for your part. You know, for the basketball courts and stuff, Farmers Market, those are big feathers in our cap. Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, I want to talk about uh, several things, actually. Uh, uh, we got a, we talked about cost overruns. I had a meeting with uh, Mark Zidler here the other day. I come from the telecom world, huge telecom world. Uh, and we were always the contractor. So we were an outsourced contractor. So we were used when a cable company needed a tool. Okay, so we were outsourced. They use that tool, and then they put that tool back down. I'm not quite sure why we can't do that in the City of Shelton. Let's outsource some of these things that we don't have. Police officers, security forces. Uh, you know, you have all kinds of things that we can outsource to that. Uh, transportation to the disqualified jail. I find that we know that maybe we're not going to spend all the million dollars. We should be spending two million dollars. We have enough individuals running around town causing mayhem that we can definitely, you know, get those people over there, but then there's staffing, there's shortages, there's everything else. Uh, fines and violation, Kathy, you asked about that. Those should be doubled. You know, why are we doing it? Uh, talking to Judge Greer, you know, he's got a good program going. People are starting to show up and do uh, community service. So just because, you know, we have this two-tiered justice system where, you know, somebody that's homelessness doesn't get affected, or somebody can actually pay a fine, they're the ones that get affected. That's ridiculous. Uh, we have nighttime officers, daytime officers that aren't communicating with bed space. We got bed spaces that is reported accurately. Uh, these things need to have, somebody needs to take the bull by the horns and get accurate data, accurate information. Culture is set from the top down. So that's Chief Beeson, having those conversations with the officers. I hear from rank and file officers every day that there's miscommunications on how they handle things. So we have, you know, I talked about it last time, twenty-five, or there was a guy sleeping in a park for twenty-five days. We got the parks getting overrun again. I mean, what are we gonna do? This is, you know, I don't, I don't understand it. Uh, just an FYI, uh, you got a ten-acre shellfish thing that's gonna be going into Oakland Bay. Just want to make sure the city's aware of that. We understand that. That's a great big recreational area for us to use. Eric, you sail out there. I learned how to sail out there. We really want ten acres? Let's talk about it. Uh, hearings examiner, they want to take the hundred thousand dollars and try to increase the bed space. Thirty-five bed spaces already gives us what we have. Do we want to take that up to fifty? Remember what the hearings examiner said? It's like adding gasoline on a fire. Thank you.
All right, Donna, anyone else?
And we have one more speaker via Zoom, and that's Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening, Mayor Nesko, Vice Mayor Schmidt, and fellow council members. I'm Colleen Carmichael. I'm the Executive Director for Quixote Communities. I know there's been some mention of defecation out in the city, and I did find some research that had been done in, uh, done by the University of California, Berkeley Division of Health and Human Services. They did a study for uh, from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty, and they used calls captured through what is three-one-one, which is a municipal uh, service that people can call to uh, report seen feces on the streets. And the objective of this study was to access the impact of public restroom interventions on the reports to see if there was a decrease in those incidences. In three hundred and thirty-eight days with the installation of new restrooms, they saw that the reports went down from forty-nine a week down to thirty-six a week. Also, if they put an attendant at some of those uh, restrooms, again, observed for three hundred and ninety days, the count went from twenty-two per week down to twenty. And in a specific neighborhood where they observed for two hundred and eighty-six weeks, the number of calls went from sixty-eight down to fifty. So it is showing and telling. I think we've discussed this before, that public restrooms might be an intervention for that. Uh, the results obviously suggest that new restrooms and provisions of attendance can improve access to quality of sanitation facilities, thus reducing open defecation for vulnerable populations without access to other sanitation. Unchallenged individuals in neighborhoods with poor access to sanitation may be at greater risk of exposure to fecal contamination from open defecation. Feces of humans as well as dogs may contain harmful pathogens that pose public health uh, risks to homeless communities and those neighborhoods. And poor sanitation is known to contribute to factors of spreading infectious diseases in communities worldwide. Lastly, the United Nations General Assembly passed Resolution in twenty-ten and reaffirmed in twenty-eighteen, declaring that adequate access to safe water and sanitation are essential human rights. And lastly, in refugee camps, the standard for sanitation is that there should be at least one toilet for every twenty persons, and no person should be dwelling further than fifty uh, meters from a toilet. So I, I just bring these up because I know there's a lot of cost discussions going on in ways the cities can reduce costs. And when your public works are out there having to clean that, and you're having also police officers and other people being called to the scenes, it's just another way we can look at as a potential cost savings for the city. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else, Donna?
No, that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on any issue that was not on the agenda tonight? All right. Council, have any new items for discussion? Right, our next meeting is Tuesday, June sixth at six P M. We also have study session June or May twenty-third at six P M. This meeting is adjourned to six forty-six P M.